Hey, what's going on guys? It's Phil from No Guts No Galaxy. Welcome to another Town Hall meeting with Russ Belloc, President of Piranha Games and creators of Mechra Online. Quick shout out to everyone who is here helping behind the scenes. Thank you so much for your time. And of course, shout out to you guys in chat, joining us live, quite a few people. And again, if you do have Twitter, want to help us spread the word, please retweet. Hope you enjoyed today's discussion and look into the future of Mechra Online. I'm joined by Darren, aka Bombdell. How you doing tonight Darren?
I am doing great. Hold on one second, turning off my fan. Sorry about that. Alright, yup, this is Darren, aka Bombdell from No Guts No Galaxy. And I'd like to extend a big thank you to everyone that's helping out with preparation and execution of this and all of our previous Town Hall meetings. And of course, to all of you out there in the livestream, thank you for being here and showing up. We totally appreciate it. Russ has joined us tonight to discuss various topics within MWO, including Community Warfare Phase 3, Becoming Rebalance, and of course, mechs, maps, game modes, and much more, based on all of the questions that were submitted by you, the community. We've gathered as many pages, or I shouldn't say as many, many pages of questions from all of you. And we'll get to as many of them as we can. For the most part, they're listed in the order that we received them, although we did do a bit of resorting of sorting to, you know, get the fresh questions up top. There's a lot of obviously repeat and overlapping questions. And we are limited on time, more so tonight than usual. Russ has to take on, get out of here hour and a half, two hours or so. So if we don't get to your question, please understand why. We'll hopefully get to him next time. And maybe even, we are talking with Russ, do a follow up maybe next week or the week after, depending on what we get through tonight. And as usual, tonight's chat will be moderated, so please keep it civil and don't be rude. And without further ado, and to give me a moment to breathe, let's get started. How are you doing tonight Russ?
Doing great. I'm happy to be back to talk to everybody. Sorry, we, I guess it's been a couple of months since we did one of these. So we need to get back on track Darren, I'm gonna put that on you. We should do these monthly, okay?
Yeah, no doubt. It has, it time flies, you know, we're doing all this work and all of a sudden, two months have gone by since the last one. So-
Summer is tough, right?
Yeah, it is, no doubt. I see a lot of, you know, interested people in chat there, bringing up a lot of similar topics. But Russ, before we jump into the questions, are there any, is there anything you want to say? Or should we just jump right in?
Yeah, well, let's, I guess quickly, I'll just say, yeah, tonight we don't have as long as usual. So I'll try to be a little less verbose than I usually am, although that's hard for me sometimes. There are a couple of announcements that I think we maybe will get out of the way. But other than that, I've got a list here, as I usually do, of where I think the majority of the questions and the big hot topics are gonna be. But as we normally do, we can jump into the questions and then as time is starting to run out, and if I realize we haven't covered off one of these important topics, then I can, you know, just dictate the conversation or something to make sure we get through those. So how does that sound?
That sounds good. I think, well, do you want to, do you want to make a statement or Phil's ready with the question, so?
Yeah, let's start out with, I got two separate kind of announcement things. Let's do one of them, one of them right now. And then maybe the other one we'll throw in in the middle, just for fun, so people can, that's what they-
Something to look forward to.
Yeah, there's a hook, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you guys saw, we just announced a big anniversary weekend sale. So that's happening right now. It's this weekend, double XP, double XP conversion, fifty percent, fifty percent off mech base and hero mechs. And that obviously is coinciding with, which is the part I'm announcing right now is that just like last year, we have, it's yearly anniversary, so we're having our second annual, I guess you'd call it, or the customer appreciation, you know, loyalty program thing. You guys might remember that from last year where we had the various levels of rewards. There's the active player award, the MC reward, the package purchasing reward, and then of course, the top tier program reward. Last year, we had the King Crab, the Atlas S, AS7S, and the Centurion AH, all with the special, you know, Viking themed pattern. So I'm gonna give you some rough details right now. We are actually gonna put up the announcement for this later this evening. So Alex and the guys are just putting the final touches on it right now, so we can get up the post. And I think we have some pretty cool rewards this year. It's not maybe quite that specific hundred ton, you know, King Crab level, but I think nonetheless, I think pretty neat. First off, I'll just give you the gist of it. The, for the active player rewards, it's gonna be very similar to last year. You got like the hundred matches played, but the criteria now has been changed. So of course, a hundred matches has been played in, since the new year, so in 2015. And then of course, you get some various rewards. There will be the cupcake again, but this one of course, has the number two on it, not the number one, second year of this. The MC package is gonna be, this is the only, only reward level that has a single mech in it. This one is, oh boy, I should have been a little better prepared for this, because I'm gonna forget the specific variants in question. But it is the Cicada, and it's Cicada with jump jets. So now that I've been caught with my pants down, let me quickly-
Well, Phil, do you know what variant that is?
It's the 3F.
Yeah, I knew Phil would know.
Okay, so maybe I won't go and find that, eh, there it is. I think I found it. Where, you know, Matt Newman here sent me this stuff, so I should be able to get the information here. Alright, so yes, it's a, it's a Cicada, and it has jump jets in it. Doesn't have, you know, just a little bit of jumps too. This thing really-
It has like twelve jump jets or something, right?
It can fly, so it's gonna be really cool. And so that's unique, that's the only Cicada that has that. The next package up is your package one, and anyone, basically any package qualifies. Now again, the qualifying situation at this point is bought a package in 2015. So at first, we're thinking about just making about the programs that we announced in 2015. But then of course, we thought, well, you know, someone might have bought a Massakari pack like last week. That's still obviously super valid, so it's more just about buying a package in 2015. And then you get the next level reward. So the package reward level is, we got two different mechs. So from here on out, there's kind of a, there's a Clan side and an Inner Sphere side. So if you've bought a Clan package, any Clan package in 2015, you get the Clan mech. And if you bought a Inner Sphere package, any Inner Sphere package, you get the Inner Sphere mech. So, and they're both variants. Again, the Clan side is a Nova variant. Give me two seconds, I'll find it. Where are you? Nova D, yeah, yeah, the Nova D. So there was something really unique about this one, I forget. I think it had the, you guys, what I didn't tell you, you guys will go find it out in two seconds. And tell me, tell me everything about it. But it had a really cool, it did have a unique hardpoint aspect that you think you'll be interested in. And on the Inner Sphere side, we have the Wolverine 7D. And the cool thing there is that it will be our first Inner Sphere mech with mask. So it does have, I think, I can't remember if the hardpoint loadout is unique, or if it's just that it has mask. I can't quite recall that, but there you have it for the, that's the package purchasing aspect. And then the top tier, package purchasing. There's two sizes, so it's the same, same as before. If you buy a top tier Clan pack, then you get the Clan one. If you get a, if you've bought a top tier IS package in 2015, you get the IS one. And, and those two mechs are, the Clan side is the Executioner C. And on the Inner Sphere side, you have the Zeus 9S2. So in both cases, there's unique, either Omnipod or hardpoint loadouts. Lastly, I guess I'll say about this is that there's a very cool pattern that the guys have come up with. It's, well, we might be able to tease an image here, but basically it's a really cool hexagonal pattern effect that the mech has on it, and basically it applies to any pattern, you know, skin pattern or colors that you put on the mech. So if you put Franken and you go to the color palette and put any colors you want on, this hexagonal, this really cool hexagonal, it overlays on top of anything you do to the mech, so it's always gonna have that hexagonal pattern. Look, I sent Darren, you guys, I sent you guys an image a few minutes ago. I just got this a few minutes ago, so that's why we're not as prepared as we could be. Everything's coming in last second. But you guys can go ahead and put that on the stream if you want.
Roger, let me get it real quick.
We'll drop that now. Just to point out, number one, we did get a lot of questions about when we're gonna have Inner Sphere mechs with mask. So there you go, that's the first one. It's a reward mech. And also, just in case any of the details of variants were incorrect or whatever, I believe we will be going live with a detailed post tonight regarding this, Russ?
Yes, that's right. There you go.
Yeah.
We'll get that image up as soon as possible, so keep going Russ.
No, I think that's about it. So that's, I think it's great. I think it's, you know, like last year. It's about this time, we, there's a little more, I guess, depth there. If you're kind of all, all Clan person or all Inner Sphere person, then of course, if you've, if you buy all the packages and there's extra levels of appreciation there for you, and thank you for the support. And as, you know, again, just take a minute now to say thanks to everybody for all your support so far in 2015. And some of the deadlines will be in the post, but I believe October 6th is a key date. Because that's when all the mechs are coming out. So yeah, that's actually a fairly important piece you would like to know. We really, you know, jumped on this, so you guys don't have to wait around forever. This October 6th becomes the deadline for some of the items, I think for the Clan, let's see, where are we looking at here? The active player reward, sort of, you know, getting your games in, the MC one. And I believe also the package purchasing one, but we've also, we pushed the top tier one to October 20th, just a little extra time. But all this is done here right in October, and all the mechs become available by October 6th. So people will get those right away if they are to qualify. And then of course, you can qualify right up until the 6th and the 20th.
Sorry, we do have the image on the stream now, so people can see what it looks like.
Cool, yes. So imagine that with any color scheme, you know, underneath. It doesn't, it's not just gonna be just that bronze color, which is obviously looks really cool, but you can shift the colors and also put any kind of pattern on there and stuff. So I think it's gonna be pretty cool, and I was actually quite pleased with what they came up with.
Alright, and we do have a couple of follow up real quick questions from chat regarding this. First of all, happy anniversary everyone, two years. Jake Peril asks, are all those extra mechs retroactive? If you have purchased all the packages, do you get them for free? Want to answer that one first?
Well, hopefully I understood the questions correctly. Can you say it again?
I think the answer is yes. He's just asking if it's retroactive. If you own all the packages, you're getting them for free, right?
Well, I mean, I guess, I just want to be clear here, that this is about package purchases in 2015. So obviously, only if, only if you bought stuff in 2015. But in this case, if he buys-
If you own all of them.
If he owns all of them, then obviously he's bought some in 2015, so yes.
Alright, and does Mastery Pack for this, Big Tin Man asks?
No, this is all about the-
The packages.
You know, the, the cash packages on the website, not the MC packages and Mastery bundles and things like that.
Exactly. Alright, well, that is awesome news. It's a beautiful skin. Can't wait to see that on a bunch of different mechs. Now, Phil, you got the first question lined up? We should jump right into this. We got so many to get through.
So this is from Narcissistic Martyr, and he says, any hints on what sorts of changes the September 22nd balance patch is going to bring?
Boy.
Okay, so first off, I have to correct something or backpedal just a little bit on this, because my roadmap says that September 22nd, the balance pass is gonna go live. That is not going to happen. Apologies, I think in the one hand, it was a bit of a misunderstanding and poor wording on my part. And also just realizing that we're just not gonna be able to go live with it then. So let me put better perspective, and we just make this about the balance pass, obviously, conversation right now. I'll try to get through this quickly. Basically, the first public test for this balance pass is, was going to be scheduled for tomorrow at like 3pm. As of literally, no exaggeration, oh, ten minutes before I went live on here, everyone said, please hold off and tell anybody, because we've got a problem with the dedicated server that we run public test on. Might be a hardware failure. We're contacting data center and trying to find out. So that's a bit of a bummer, but obviously, it's the first public test. Hopefully is going to be any day now. If this turns out to not be a hardware failure, it could still be tomorrow. If it is, I'm not sure if we can shift around to another DS or something in the meantime, so I have to figure that out. But it shows you where we are with that. It was gonna be tomorrow. So we had that first public test. My goal then would be that there's really no way possible that we could have that first public test, get all the feedback from players, put all that together and patch by September 22nd, because you guys know about our two week patch process for QA. Really, the September 22nd pack, 22nd patches, pretty much locked down right now. It's already in branch test and stable, et cetera, going towards September 22nd, and we haven't even had the first public test. So I couldn't put the feedback in. So very best case scenario now, it'll be in an October patch. Maybe like the earliest possible would be October 6th, maybe the next patch in October. I just don't know yet, but let me provide you with some other details, so you maybe like my answer better than you do right now. So the other reason, there's just no way that it can go out September 22nd, is I want to set expectation for everybody for this first public test. It's gonna be, I'm just gonna, just to be safe and conservative, I'm gonna say, it might very well be pretty far off, the first time you guys experience a public test on this. I mean, it's really a hundred percent untested. What we have here is, we have a very methodical, scientific approach to analyzing every single mech in our game. How many hardpoints it has, where are those hardpoints, what are the engine caps, how big is it physically, how fast can it move? Is it, does it have fixed equipment, locked equipment, like what's its pod space? Everything you can imagine about the mech, we thought about and took the time to analyze everything in one big picture. And then adjusted the mechs. I know battle values are confusing system. Someone recommended MechWarrior value for sure. That's great, Mechra Online value, whatever you want to call it. It's our own Mechra Online number, our series of, well, it's a number really. And we, we come up with that, and now we got this four sided triangle. Basically, it's the mobility, protection, firepower, and the sensor, the new sensor tweaks that we've done to the game. So we've done this to every single mech, and it's all done. So think of this as giant document spreadsheet, everything. All that information has been plugged into the game, along with the extra program we needed for the sensor stuff, the extra program we needed to put this new graph in the front end UI, so you can look at the graph and say, here's what Piranha Games has given it for values, and they say, this is what it is, and this is how it compares to the other mechs. So you'll have that comparison tool. All that's done, finished in a branch, ready for public test. But obviously, it hasn't been tested in a live environment yet with hundreds, if not thousands and thousands of people saying, oh, cool, but wow, you really missed it here, you really missed it there, and are you sure you like this number for these mechs? Because I think that sucks, and there's gonna be a lot of that. So the reason we, we were gonna set this up today before this issue happened, we delayed that till tomorrow 3, because Alex is gonna be setting up what we think hopefully is a very robust new section in the forums for feedback. Ideally, where you can provide feedback on any given mech or even variant. So I expect there'll be significant feedback and debate among why we chose the values we did. I'm sure there'll be plenty, if not dozens of situations where we say, oh, okay, you know what? I think, I think that maybe they got a point there. Let's, let's do that, let's do this. So again, none of that can make it in for the 22nd. My goal would be that with the very worst case, we would have a second round of public tests with incorporated feedback by September 22nd. So you could replace that September 22nd live date with maybe another public test round. And then we go from there, again, best case scenario, and I would probably shift to October 6th for a live release. So we'll take it from there, we'll play it by ear. But that's probably the most information I can give you about the balance pass now. I know there's been other questions in the past about just exactly all it entails. I think I just described it fairly well. I know that some people have asked about other things, but I can tell you, it hasn't done to this point. Maybe I can answer this definitively for some of you people, is that no, we have not added extra hardpoints to any mechs or taken hardpoints away. Those are things that are there, and you know, when you guys bought the mechs, and those aspects have not changed. We have not shifted where hardpoints are modeled on mechs as part of this pass. And I guess I can't wait, we haven't rescaled any mechs yet. I mean, so that's still on the table. But basically, it's incorporated everything else, every single aspect of what you've come to known as quirks, whether that be generic turn rate ones, yaw, pitch, all the weapon ones and generic weapon ones to, everything like that, all the quirk system completely has been used in this. I guess I can't think of anything else to say, but that's really, you know, with, with judging the mech in every fashion that I've already described and using those tools, along with a new sensor aspect to give certain mechs for more role warfare. So you will, we will see an increase in role warfare with, just as an example that isn't based in fact, I'm just making an example here. So I don't, is maybe a locust has a much greater, you know, sensor ability, sensor range than some assault mech. So that's an element that's gonna increase our information warfare. And that's it, that's, so Phil, I'm gonna, that's a little bit of a dump on the question that covers kind of the entire rebalance topic, but maybe you've got, maybe, maybe if there's other questions that you think I could follow up on, or do even a better job, then maybe let's go to those questions now if possible.
Well, also, I'd like to say, everybody kept saying battle value about it. There's a reason why Russ isn't using the term battle value, because it can be misleading for people that play tabletop, et cetera. So again, it is a MechWarrior value, you know, but similar, I guess, in the basic concept of a battle value. But Phil, is there anything you want to cover? I mean, there's some questions about sensor quirks, jump check quirks. Is the meta gonna change? Does that mean that all the money that they've spent on, you know, building their mechs for the meta is wasted, et cetera? Do you want to address any of this?
Well, I mean, I think it's fair to say that, I hope, I mean, if we've, if we've been successful with this new balance pass at all, like if we've been remotely successful with it, then certainly the meta's gonna change. I mean, that's the whole point, right? The whole point is, we achieve-
Rebalance.
We achieve, well, and even more so than that, the entire point is, we achieve a level of balance, the greatest level of balance that the game has ever had. And so in order for that to be a true statement, you can't have certain mechs and certain loadouts that are night and day better than other ones. So the idea is to, you know, create more of a level balanced playing field in each of the respective roles. Doesn't mean, of course, that a locust is now the same as a timber wolf. It means though, that an Orion or some other similar tonnage heavy should be more competitive and more similar and more balanced towards that timber wolf. That's a fair statement. I know that's a fairly, with, looking at the game today, that's a fairly, you know, extreme statement. Those two mechs are not similar at the moment, and maybe some would argue that, but not very many. So yeah, I mean, I think absolutely, if we've done our job, the meta should change, because it should be far more balanced, I think is the key. So I don't know, if you want to judge that negatively as towards your, all the money you've been wasted. Well, I think the only way, reason or you should look at it that way is if you, if you see the meta as only shifting rather than actually being balanced, because if it's actually balanced, then your mechs and everything you've spent money on should be every bit as valid as it's ever been, and in some cases with some mechs, more valid. But if the meta just simply shifts to other mechs, other weapon systems, then, then I understand your point. And if that's the case, then we have not been successful. And I suppose the chances of this whole system going live would be reduced if we just simply shifted the meta.
Alright, so for clarification, Russ, a lot of people, you know, are, are asking questions out there. But what you're saying is, this is going up on PTS, and the people are gonna have feedback. PGI, you guys are gonna be listening, that feedback is gonna be taken, put into consideration, see if those changes need to go in. And then another PTS going up potentially after. So what you're saying is, this is gonna be extensive public testing with feedback before any consideration would be going to production. Is that correct?
That is correct, and even though I was slightly scared to say it, because I hate delays, if we do a second PTS around September 22nd, that also means that there's, you know, it, the live date might not even be October 6th. There might be, it really depends how it goes. There could be, there could be another public test in 22nd, there could be another public test by the 1st of October. And they'll, I guess, the live date really becomes when we're done doing public tests, and we're done getting player feedback, and our community is at a point where they say, awesome, let's go live with this, then we go live with it. So hopefully, that's in October. That's my hope.
And, and you did mention, you know, if we've done our job with the balance and so forth. But I do want to put out there also that there's a job for the community to do, which is get on test, test it, give us feedback. And, and that's gonna, you know, have a big impact as well. So I think that pretty much covered the rebalance in general. If there's more specific questions that, you know, we can ask a little bit later, we will, but we're gonna move on to Community Warfare. So the first question, and this is just very general, we got a lot of these. So Knight Fastus, he just says, what is the status on Phase 3 of Community Warfare?
Community Warfare, we just had a meeting about it today. I think you guys, it'd go back in time just a little bit briefly here. Phase 3 originally was scheduled to come out a little while ago, admittedly. It was probably, you know, summer to, you know, about now, kind of at the latest. We definitely got ourselves on purpose sidetracked on a number of things that we needed to do for, you know, a newer player experience to, whether that's Steam, of course, would be the, by far the largest aspect of, you know, an influx of new players. But in general, you know, we still get thousands of registrations every week from MechWarrior Online, and you know, this is, it's always a thing that you're considering. So there's a number of things we've done, you know, this year entirely so far, whether it's, you know, VoIP, press the talk, Viper, looking for group windows, changes and improvements we've made in the socials, windows and social screens, and the ability to group up with players and merge groups and all that. And then of course, of course, the tutorial is the largest thing, and that was a really big undertaking. It's taken, I don't even know how many months at this point. It's four plus anyhow. It's, there's a lot of work in the background that's really laying, we tried to, when we started that work, I wanted to know that it wasn't like, get this done as quick as you can. It was like, everything you do for that tutorial has to be general, reusable by designers, tools and, and screens and functionality that we could use in the future for when we want to do, you know, AI, PVE content, single player content, all this stuff in that we want to get to in the future, all that stuff needs to be reusable. So it's very robust and flexible tools that we made for the tutorial. So there was the whole tutorial system and a number of fixes and changes that we had to, that just jumped ahead for the time being. At least they jumped ahead for the time being in certain skill sets. Cover that in a second. So other examples, of course, of things we need to get fixed up was MechLab, MechSelect stuff. And this coming patch, you'll see a brand new home screen, which is much, much better. And all this stuff combined, and we could talk about the new, the Camel Spec screen is actually getting worked on. The work should start on that by early next week. And so that's just another revamp, just like make it way better and just way more functional than it currently is. It's important, you know, it is important for the game and the game's revenues. If you think about newer players coming in, or even people coming from Steam and then trying to use the existing Camel Spec screen, it's just not a great experience. So we had to get all those things fixed and buttoned up. So in the meantime, even though the Community Warfare Phase 3 design has been finished for months now, some of the work's been done, and all in all, I can take a very rough guess and say, Phase 3 is at least fifty percent done now, maybe even more like sixty or more percent done. The backwork done, backend work is, is, who knows, very complete. Let's just call it, majority finished. The 4v4 scouting mode, game modes, everything, those are all finished. But the main pull, because we've been creating MechLabs and MechSelects and all these things, has been on the UI. And just really what the ties it all together from a player perspective. So that work, basically those, the individual that works on that now has shifted over to that work at this point. So we're coming together as a team, and we're really focused on Phase 3, and working hard on it right now. So I don't think I'll go over the details of it again right now, just because I've done it before in a past Town Hall, I think fairly extensively, on all the major features of Phase 3 from the new, much more robust, contract system, the bigger difference between what's a mercenary, what's a loyalist, what's a freelance player, and how the factions now have a voting system as to who they're at war with. And that will focus what planets go up for contention, so you'll see a much more, more focused group of planets. You're only ever at war with one faction, and then there's some defense possibilities. That'll focus players more. You've got the scout missions that- that tie into the invasion missions now. So as you scout and you get intelligence, it unlocks the radar capabilities, the long time artillery and these things will turn on and off. There's three different levels right now. They'll turn on and off in real time inside of matches. You've got the ability as mercenaries and loyalists to upgrade your defenses. As loyalists, you've got the ability to incentivize mercs to increase rewards and plans you'd want them to fight on. These are the, the general points across the board of the four v four game mode, et cetera. That's it. That's, you know, that's, I've just touched on the majority of it. There's leaderboards built into the client. That's going to be great. That's going to provide a lot more motivation for players to, you know, take over planets and such. That's the, the vast majority of the feature set I've, I've listed off there.
I have a few quickies if you want me to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Like specifics that maybe you can answer quick. One is, can we, this is from Lord Losh. Can we try small amounts of MC rewards for capturing and holding planets for Clan Wars? So some kind of just increased rewards, the possibility of it being MC, et cetera.
The answer is yes. The answer is I think it's inevitable that we're going to do that. I'm not going to say I promised that in phase three, but in phase three, we will have the leaderboards and if I add the MC aspect onto it, I would, at the worst case scenario, I think that would be a very quick addition. I want people to think about Community Warfare kind of like this. We call it phase three, but semantics pretty much like I, it, it, the game is a living, breathing game, right? For the most part, the main game has just gets passed frequently. Community Warfare has taken a bit of a different tone. Really, there was phase one. And, and sometimes we call it phase three because the initial unit creation thing got like a phase designation. But if we can wipe out that terminology for a second, and I don't know why I'm saying this because after this, we'll all just call it phase three still. But the reason I'm making this point is if we look at the main release last December as the, as phase one, we released that and then you saw kind of January, February, March, maybe some of April.